The meeting will come to order. Please take your seats. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the special town meeting of November 1st, 2022. I am Tim Goddard, your moderator. Every town meeting must be called pursuant to a warrant issued by the Select Board, and as such, we'll begin by reviewing the return of service of the warrant, which is a requirement. And I've inspected the warrant and determined that it was properly executed by the Select Board and served by a constable of the town of Littleton. We are in session. I'd like to begin this evening with our National Anthem. I understand we have a student here who is going to lead us in that, is Amia Clements here. There she is. She's a sophomore at Littleton High School. And I guess we can use this microphone down here, so please stand for our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That's great. Thank you. All right, we'll start with some preliminary items where we get to the meat of tonight's warrant, which is, as you know, it's a 16-article town meeting warrant. It's a special town meeting. Typical of all special town meetings, the business is not quite as much as it might be in an annual, but it's important and necessary, and we want to give it the attention that it deserves. I think I want to first recognize attending town meeting for the first time, our Assistant Town Administrator, Ryan Farrar. Welcome, Ryan. And then just a few remarks. We've come together in this civil assembly as a community in a tradition that's older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate vigorously for our positions, but not at the expense of others. It's possible to agree with others, I'm sorry, to disagree with others in an agreeable manner, respecting our neighbors' views equally with our own. But let's also remember that our neighbors, with whom we may disagree, are good people too, with hopes and dreams as aspirational and true as our own. Let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any differences that we have. Thank you for listening to that. I will, yeah, that's okay. I just wanted to remind folks that I hope everyone brought their town meeting booklet with them, that they probably got in the mail at home. If not, got copies here tonight. The majority of the town meeting motions are contained in that, and that'll be important as we get to the various articles, also information, background materials on each of the articles. In addition to this, we have the update sheet that was on the table as you may, you were in tonight. Someone called this a salmon color. I guess I'd say orange, since Halloween was yesterday. But there are revised motions on here. The Select Board actually met earlier this evening, and they have revised motions for Articles 2, 4, 9, and 12, that will be the motions that will be in effect for those articles. So between the two publications, you'll have everything that you need, and I'll point out to you when we're going with the revised motion and when we're sticking to what's in the booklet. What we've done in the past is a procedure called the Consent Calendar, whereby we attempt to bundle articles that are non-controversial or deemed to be non-controversial, routine, reauthorizations of previous votes, and things that we don't think will generate a lot of debate or a lot of controversy. We try to bundle those motions together and approve them with a single affirmative vote, and thereby leaving other motions and articles to be debated in the normal course of things, those that might require more information and more debate. So we're going to go with that procedure again tonight, and I will, you can find this on page one in your town meeting report. I'm going to read through the titles of the articles, and I'll say right off the bat, I'm not going to propose to include every article in that bundle, and I'll cite which ones we're not going to put in that procedure. Specifically, it's not my intention to include Article 11, the Classification and Compensation Plan Amendments, Article 13, the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw, or Articles 15 and 16, which are both citizens' petition articles. So I'm going to be reading through the list, but intently, those four are not going to be part of that list. Moreover, if anyone objects to including an article in a consent calendar, they need to raise their hand, call it "hold" in a loud voice, and we'll come back to that article, and it'll be held aside, and it will be debated in the normal course of things. It won't be part of that procedure to bundle the more routine articles. I hope, we've done this for several years now, but I hope that's not confusing, but in any event, I'll read through the articles that we would propose in that procedure. Article 1, Bills of Prior Years. Article 2, amend FY 2023 operating budget. Okay, there's a hold on 2. Article 3, supplemental FY 23 capital items from available funds. Now, Article 4, capital stabilization fund transfer. Article 5, Oak Hill stabilization fund transfer. Article 6, senior citizen property tax work-off abatement program. Article 7, Veterans' Property Tax Work-Off Abatement Program. Article 8, Community Preservation Fund Donation Transfer. Article 9, and this is a revised motion on the orange sheet, just to point out that there were once two motions for this article. The Select Board is withdrawing the second one, so this is just the first motion, which approves the community preservation budget for FY 23. So again, number 9, Community Preservation Committee, FY 23, Community Preservation. Article 10, Fund Collective Bargaining Agreement. Okay, 11, we're skipping over. We'll do that as we normally would. 12, General Bylaw Amendments. Skipping over 13, I'm sorry? The, there's not, they did, they put the adjustment in? Yes, yeah. All right. All right, passing over 13 to 14, Street Acceptance, Douglas Street. And then 15 and 16, our citizens' petitions, we'll debate those in the normal course of matters. All right, if I heard correctly, there were holds placed on 2 and 3, so is there a brief affirmative motion to approve the separate and distinct motions for Articles 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12?
So moved.
And 14. And 14. Is there such a motion? So moot, seconded. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes by unanimous vote, by my count. Well, thank you very much. We've dealt with several of the articles. With that one vote, we can spend more time on the articles that will generate more interest, I believe. So we'll go back to Article 2, and you'll find the revised motion on your orange handout sheet from tonight, and I'll say that it's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve or to amend the FY 23 operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2022, as adopted under Article 4 of the May 2, 2022 Annual Meeting as follows. One, to transfer $463,000 from free cash to the Park Recreation and Community Education Other Expenses account. And the numbers are listed there. And two, to raise and appropriate $199,226 to cover the budget adjustments of various departments of the town identified in the chart, in the town report, by adding said sums to the amount appropriated under Article 4 of the May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the operation of the town and its government. Okay, would the board like to speak to that? Would you have the Finance Director speak to those?
Finance Director.
Okay, Finance Director, could you speak to those adjustments?
Through the moderator, thank you, Tim. To the honorable citizens and residents, Article 2, the $463,000 from free cash to Parks and Recreation, Community Education, is due to the fact that during annual town meeting, when you voted their budget cap, we had an estimation of around $200,000. They actually had an astronomical year and collected more receipts than we had estimated. We recently had free cash certified, and we want to rescind the enterprise fund during May. This $463,000 from free cash will be replenished during the May town meeting, when we rescind the enterprise fund. So that's the reason for the $463,000 request. To raise and appropriate the $199,226, this is due to the compensation and classification study to fund it. This is to propose funding six months for facilities manager for the town, beginning January 1, 2023, a new assistant town planner, beginning April 1, 2023, and additional hours for the assistant library director to bring them to full-time.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, a member of the Select Board wish to address the adjustments, or I understand the Finance Committee wishes to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so the Finance Committee met before town meeting. We're recommending support of Section 1 of Article 2, but we would like to propose a modification to Section 2, changing the verbiage to raise and appropriate $174,226,000. The rationale to that, we didn't get the opportunity to speak with the Land Use Department on adding back in the assistant town planner into this fiscal year's process. We talked about it a lot during the year, but our last discussion was in holding that off until the regular town meeting in the spring.
Is there a substitute or an amendment to the second part of that motion?
So our recommendation would be to keep the motion as written, with the exception of substituting the value of $199,226 with $174,226.
I'm sorry, what, the total? $174,226, thank you. Okay. All right, there's a, that's a, the motion to amend the amount of $199,226 to $174,226 under Number 2, under Article 2. Is there a second to that? Second, okay. All right, so debate is now open on the proposed amendment to $174,226. Does anyone wish to address that amendment? For the Select Board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The original amount, $199,226, included funding for an assistant town planner position, which is the difference between the amount that the modification covers versus the amount that the Select Board approved. The Select Board did discuss this at some length, including conversations with the Land Use Department, and we do recommend that we approve it, the full amount, including the assistant town planner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now debate is open on the proposed Amendment 2, Number 2, so please use the center microphone. When you make your comments, and please wait to be recognized, and state your name and address for the record, and remember, all questions should be through the moderator, and no rude or disrespectful remarks, and no direct references to any individuals. All right, we'll start now. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Mullin, 10 Griss Mill Road, also the Building Commissioner and Director of Land Use. We feel it's important to support our town planner with assistant town planner. We discussed this at length with the Select Board, and I too would ask that we don't support the amended motion and put it back to the original motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mark Montanari, 36 Tahawan Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. We've been a long time waiting for the help for the town planner. We're getting, as everyone knows, the town's getting busier and busier. We need this funded, and the position filled as soon as possible, and I too support leaving the amendment as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Anna Houston, 55 Jennifer Street. So Chair Nordhaus was correct that we did go before the Select Board at the end of September, and the primary reasons for requesting this particular item to be held to its original language is because every, every single day matters. From that perspective, we sort of compromised, we would like to be able to have a town planner, an assistant town planner, begin immediately, but we recognize that that's just not as feasible, but if they could start around April, and so this, these dollars are really for April, May, and June, and the rationale again behind that is that it takes several months to get somebody who's professional, qualified, to be able to start. As my colleagues have said, there is so much work to be done. During the time that we were with the Select Board, I went through the list of the different projects that are involved, that require Maureen's assistance, and they are numerous, as well as the fact that she needs to be able to provide support to the planning board. And right now, with all of the applications coming through, we do need all the support that we can get. So I request that our voters in town today, please, please go back to the original language. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Mr. Moderator, I concur with the Chair of the Select Board that we keep the figure and vote down the amendment for the simple reason, a lot of people may not realize, the planning board is a key element in this town. This town is growing. We up, little over 10,000, I think Madam Clerk could justify and say that we're over 10,000 from where we used to be. There's a lot of stuff that's going on in this town, and the planning board, the planner that we have there now, she is bombarded with work that needs to get done, and not having the delay with the development and so forth. This town is growing. Where you realize it or not, there's a lot of stuff that's going on in this town. And to knock that down $25,000, you know, I, I think that we need to keep it where it's at, and there's no reason why we don't have a system. Most towns and cities, they even have two or three planters in the department that are systems. Here, we have one for I don't know how many years, and she's been doing a superb job, as far as I'm concerned, with the contacts that I've made with her there. Matter of fact, I just spoke to her today, and I just think that, let's don't beat a horse here, let's give the town what the town need, $25,000, $25,000 ain't going to break you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. If there's no one else to speak to the amendment, we're ready for vote. And the vote is to, this is Article 2, on your orange sheet, and Paragraph 2, to raise and appropriate $174,226 to cover the budget adjustments of various departments of the town. And I won't read the rest of it. So it's to change the amount that you see written there to $174,226. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails, and the original amount is in the, back in Question 2, or Paragraph 2. I think we're probably ready for vote on the entire article, so.
Um.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, I'm Joanne Deary from Harwood Avenue.
Okay.
I just didn't understand about Paragraph 1, which wasn't in the original, and it, I think it was said that there was more revenue than expected, so we have to give them more money, and something got rescinded, and I didn't, could we get any more?
Okay, we'll get an explanation of the first paragraph.
Through the moderator. Good evening. The Parks and Recreation Department, that is correct, they collected more revenue than we expected them to collect at the end of the year, so we want to allow them to be able to use that money so we can close the fund out, as they are now a revolving fund. So we want to dissolve their enterprise fund. So what we came up with while working with the Department of Revenue is to use free cash to fund them through the year, rescind their fund, so their enterprise fund will be gone in May, close to the general fund, so the net effect of this transfer is zero.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Speaker. So is it, like, they had sort of a little endowment from the town, and now they don't need that any longer, so we're just going to close that off?
No, through the moderator. They actually collect receipts for their activities, so what they received for the quarter ending in June 30, at the end of the year, they got more in than they thought. So usually, they end with about $200,000, which is what I had put in as an estimation. This year, they actually ended with $600,000 in receipts they took in for programming. So what we want to do is close out their fund in May, but still allow them to use those funds now, so that when they close to the general fund, the net effect is zero for their operations.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we ready to proceed to?
Do your thing.
Up to you, what? The, the hold was on the second paragraph, not the first, so I don't think there are any additional questions. All right then, on your orange sheet, under Article 2, all those in favor of approving the budget adjustments as printed on the update sheet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. It, motion carries by the necessary majority. Not quite a unanimous vote, but thank you very much. We'll move now to Article 3, and this is just as it's printed in the, yes, sir? That's why we're, we're going to, we're going to Article 3, which was the next hold. We just voted Article 2. There was a hold on Article 2. We just voted to approve Article 2. Now we're moving to Article 3, where there was another hold. I'm not, I'm not following. We had two holds, and we dealt with the first one, now we're moving on to the second one. We just, we just, it was the first article that we dealt with, but it was Article 2, sir. We just voted on Article 2. You spoke to it.
I spoke on the amendment.
The amendment within Article 2. It's too late for Article 2. We're on to Article 3. What, did you? The Finance Committee held.
Is there something, is there something pulled out?
Is it a question?
Yes.
It's a, ask the question, please, but it, we really did just vote it.
Mr. Moderator, the net operating budget is $53,751,327. I'd like to know, how many employees does that figure represent for the town of Littleton?
Is there a quick answer to that question? Full-time equivalents? We don't, we don't have the information available. We can get that for you, sir, and get that to you tomorrow, if you like. Okay, you're welcome. We'll move now to Article 3, which will be in your, your white town meeting report, and it's moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 3, just as printed in the warrant. And this does require a two-thirds majority vote, because it involves transferring funds from the Capital Stabilization Fund, and those are the rules of transferring funds out of that Capital Stabilization Fund. of that Capital Stabilization Fund. But someone had a hold on that, so please come to the microphone and make it known.
I put the hold on this article because I went through the town report from last year, and I found that the communications part of the police budget was increased by about a hun, about the same amount of money. And I know the police station isn't that old, and I wonder why they keep having to put large amounts of money into their communications department. I mean, a brand-new police department should be well-equipped when they open the new doors, you know? So here it is, another year goes by, and it's another great big amount of money for the communications department. So, why? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. The communication system for the police department is at the end of its useful life. It is currently being held together through a combination of the goodwill of some residents and local people who understand how to use it, because the equipment is so old that it cannot, can no longer be sourced. The $166,000 increase is primarily due to the increase in cost of everything due to the global supply chain issues. Costs are skyrocketing for construction, for goods and services, and that is the reason why the, this amount of money has increased.
Yes.
Jenna Brownson, Harvard Road. Is some of this money going to remedy the mortar that was installed in the winter, and we then came to learn that it shouldn't have been put in in such cold weather?
I guess the answer is no.
Okay. All right. And a follow-up question would therefore be, have we gone back to the person who put in the mortar that froze and didn't hold the bricks together to ask them to pay us to fix it, rather than ask the taxpayers to fix it?
Question about? Yeah, I don't, I don't think that information is available at the moment. It doesn't strictly pertain to either of the capital items.
Okay, who might be able to answer that question down the road? Who would be a good person to find out? Anthony?
I'm told the Permanent Municipal Building Committee would have that information.
Okay, then.
Thank you. Okay, yes, well, is it, is it something new, Harvey? Because, well, you're the only one, only one in line, so go ahead.
Thank you for just counting one. I just wanted to find out what they had for communications equipment when they opened the new police station, and how old is the police station now?
Mr. Moderator, through you, I will have to defer to the, the police department. I don't have that information on hand, or the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, if they know the answer. But I see Chief Patterson is coming to the mic.
Deputy Chief Patterson?
Good evening, Ms. Moderator. Seven Christina Street, Littleton, and also the Deputy Police Chief. The new station, well, the station's 10 years old, going on 11 years old now. The equipment was put in at that time, was new. It is no longer being supported by the company Motorola and our maintenance company. They no longer get parts for a certain part of it, and they've been taking parts from old equipment that they have. It's, it's time for an upgrade.
Okay, if there's no one else, we'll proceed to vote on Article III. We're calling that it requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of approving Article III as printed in the warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, passes by the necessary two-thirds majority, and I declare to vote. Thank you very much. We will now move all the way up to Article XI, which was not included in our consent calendar, because it involves a substantial revision to the town's compensation and classification plan. And you'll, you'll note there are a lot of retitling of positions, positions that will no longer exist, a lot of moving pieces. So I think that you ought to hear from the Select Board and DHR Director on that, on that plan. So Select Board Member Wilson, you prepared to speak to Article XI?
Yes. So Article XI, over the last couple of years, we've been going through a compensation study, and this is Phase One of the results of that study to get Littleton more competitive salary grid, which is quite outdated. As you can see, it's expanded quite a bit grade-wise. We went from 15 to 24 grades. The, the grid was looked at comparison to other towns of similar size in our community. And as a result, this is the new grid in front of you today. The positions specifically, this is more of a clerical cleanup, and we will continue to see this going forward as, as our, now that we've expanded the compensation grid, and as our town grows, we'll have new positions. We're trying to make situations where we have assistant in this department is the same as assistant in this department, and so on and so forth. So we have a lot of cleanup to do in regards to that. And I would expect in the future town meetings, if not May, we will see more of this. But the grid, the Board believes will carry us probably through, I would hoping, a decade. I think it's got a lot of growth potential in there and expandability for our future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard with respect to Article XI? If, if not, we could, oh, I spoke too soon. Yes, sir?
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know on this grid, from where they moved the fund before we vote on it tonight to 24, how much increase in the budget is this grid?
How much?
For where they moved it, if it's at 14, they moved to 24.
What is the total adjustments to salaries?
Yeah.
Townwide as a result of this new chart? Okay, Finance Director, I think there's some explanatory text, but if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, it's $46,260 for fiscal year '23.
Okay. All right. Again, moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article XI as printed in the warrant. And I know there's a lot of text, but there are no changes to any of it. You'd be approving exactly what's printed in the town report. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes by the necessary majority. In fact, I declare a unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, please, so record. We previously handled Article XII, so now we're on to Article XIII, which is a proposed amendment to the zoning code proposed by the Planning Board. So it requires a two-thirds majority vote. Also requires that the Planning Board has a public hearing in advance of town meeting on that proposed zoning change. So if I could have the Chair of the Planning Board or a member of the Board make that report to town meeting, that you did indeed have a public hearing and what the result of that was?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board did have a meeting, an open public meeting on October 6th to debate this issue.
Okay, you, you had a public hearing, and the Board, did the Board take a vote at that hearing?
Yes, affirmative vote.
A unanimous vote to support the vote, the amendment that was submitted. Thank you. Okay. And you can see that it really is changed to a subsection of the inclusionary housing section of the bylaw. The motion is a simple one, moved and seconded by the Planning Board. The town vote to approve Article XIII as printed in the warrant. And it does require two-thirds majority, since it is a zoning amendment. Does anyone wish to be heard regarding Article XIII? Yes.
Robin Sewell, 60 Foster Street. Just some information for why this is, there's a need for this, and where the magic number six came from, or, sorry, why, why the, why was six chosen?
Sure.
In this article. Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a member of the Planning Board explain the rationale behind asking for the zoning change? Or the, or the, our town planner, perhaps as well? Yes, go ahead, Maren.
Thank you. Town Planner, Maureen Two Hill. This zoning bylaw amendment would close a loophole that A&R plans now have in our inclusionary housing zoning bylaw. All sub, all new developments that create six or more units in a subdivision, in a special permit, in a multifamily development, those are all required to include affordable housing. This would close a loophole and require A&R plans to also include affordable housing.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard with respect to Article XIII? If not, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving Article XIII as printed in the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes by the necessary two-thirds majority, and I declare to vote. Thank you very much. You will recall that we earlier voted on Article XIV, the acceptance, the laying out of Douglas Street. And so that brings us to Articles XV and XVI, our two citizens' petitions for the evening. And Article XV is, the motion is to, moved and seconded to see if the town will vote to put a cap on the number of marijuana farms allowed in the town of Littleton. And is the proponent here for that? Just preliminary to that, though, I communicated with the petitioners a few weeks ago, to the effect that while putting a cap on the number of marijuana facilities might, is a legal goal. The question, as stated on your petition, is not specific enough, and it's not in the form of a bylaw or other kind of vehicle that town meeting could approve to affect such a cap. So in essence, it really only allows for a sense of the town meeting as to whether or not such a cap is warranted. A yes vote would have no legally binding effect. And I communicated this to the lead petitioner a couple of weeks ago. Didn't hear anything back, but, so what I'm saying is, we can go ahead, you can give your reasons for wanting the cap, we can have a vote. It's not gonna be effective, whether it's a yes vote or a no vote. It might tell the Select Board that the townspeople think you should bring a bylaw forward at a future town meeting, but it's, what you want to do, you can't do here tonight with this language.
I am the petitioner. I never heard from anybody about this not being approved. No one called me.
Are you, are you Ms. Bera, lead petitioner?
Yes.
Well, I emailed you, ma'am.
I did not get your email.
Okay, either way, it doesn't change what's gonna happen here tonight. You can make a case for your petition, and people can debate that. We can have a vote. At the end of the day, the vote isn't going to change one way or the other.
What good is it, then?
That's, that, I guess that's the question. If you wanted to do this, in my opinion, you'd want to propose a bylaw and come back to a future town meeting, or ask the Board, or a Board, if they're willing to do it.
And in the meantime, they could put up 20 more farms in our town. Our town is gonna suffer from this. We're gonna be known as the pot place of this area, and the smell on Taylor Street will never go away. That's why we're here. No one told me I had to put this differently. I put it the way I thought I had to. There should be a cap on the amount of farms that could be approved in this town.
And there can be a cap if the town votes a bylaw that establishes a cap. We just don't have that here in this article. So this article can't be effective in doing that tonight. You can, you can register, you know, your opposition to these kinds of facilities, and I think you're doing that right now. But, you know, I do want you to know that, you know, it's, it's essentially a non-binding referendum, if you will, to town meeting. The town meeting can state its opinion, but it's not gonna be a legal, a legally binding vote.
Erica Padgorn in Fox Lane. I don't really feel strongly either way about this. But so often, at town meeting, when people bring up citizens' petitions, this is what happens. We hear, well, it's not legally binding, it doesn't really mean anything. It seems like there should be a process where if a citizen wants to bring forward a petition, that they can know whether or not it's going to be binding before they go out and get signatures, before they get to this point. And there doesn't seem to be any process for that, and it, it just doesn't seem right, that if someone wants to bring something forward, they don't have a real way of doing that, or of knowing how it needs to be phrased, or, or how it needs to be presented.
Okay, I do hear that, and I do sympathize. I would say, in most cases, the, the town clerk simply receives a petition with 100 signatures on it, and it's too late to change the language, because those 100 people signed, signed up for the language that was in front of them. So the time to consult with boards is before circulating the petition, I agree. But a lot of times, the town simply has to go forward with what's submitted. Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, George Sanders, 672 Great Road. What I'd like to know is that if the petition was turned in to the clerk, did it not go to the Select Board? And there at the Select Board, it ends up on the agenda here. So if it wasn't right, I don't understand why it would have been put on the agenda if it wasn't right. So I would like to hear from the Select Board if the citizen petition went to them, and they agreed to put it on there. You shouldn't agree to put nothing on here if it's not right. Thank you.
Okay. And before I recognize the Board, I just wanted to say that the signatures go for certification first to the clerk's office, then the Select Board does in fact receive the petition. And they are obligated to put it on the warrant, but they can't change one comma of what the petition says. They can't fix one that's defective. They can't do anything at that point. The time to talk to them is before you start getting signatures.
I'd like to address that, Mr. Moderator. Well, I think that the Select Board should be able to guide someone. If it's not right, why would they vote to put it on the agenda? It just doesn't make sense.
They, they have, they have to accept it. If it has the necessary signatures, it has to go on the warrant.
I understand they have to.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm gonna recognize the town administrator, if, if you would, Mr. Insaldi.
Town Council.
Well, Town Council. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Tom Harrington, Town Council.
Good evening, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So, I understand the frustration, but from, from the town's perspective and from town council's perspective, when the petition is submitted to the town clerk with 100 signatures for a special, and I think 10 for an annual, we are obligated, it is the law, it is state law, that it go on the warrant, so the selectman does not vote to put it on the warrant, it is on the warrant by law, and it comes to town meeting. But then I have to make the decision with the moderator whether or not it can be acted upon, and in this case, it can't. What, and so my suggestion would be, if you want to bring forward something like a zoning bylaw, and this would be a zoning bylaw, there is a statute that guides you, but you start with the town clerk early in the process, and let her know what you want to do, she will guide you through the process. However, when you show up with a fully signed petition, our hands are tied. There is no choice. It goes from the town clerk to the Select Board's office and on the warrant, and then ultimately, we need to deliver the news at town meeting that we can't do anything about it. So, I, so I hope you take that as guidance, that there is another way to do it, but it requires the petitioners to come forward early. Once the petition is in, the die is cast, and there's nothing else we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Dave Macrissey, Brook Lane. Simple question and process. Is it possible to move to amend, amend the language of the article in a way that might be useful?
I'm going to ask council again. I think the answer to that is no, because it.
Yeah, again, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Tom Harrington, Town Council. In response to the previous speaker, the answer is no. A zoning bylaw needs to follow a certain process. For instance, we had a zoning bylaw earlier in the evening, and you heard the Planning Board approach the microphone and deliver their report. Before any zoning change comes to town meeting, the Planning Board must have a hearing. In order for the Planning Board to have a hearing, they must receive the zoning amendment. So, so this is a process, particularly zoning amendments, that needs to start six to nine months before town meeting, at the, you know, and maybe earlier. But it's, it's a long process, you need to start it early so that we have the ability to go through each of the necessary steps that we need to take before we bring it to town meeting.
Okay, yes?
Cheryl Calley Hollinger, 44 Tejadoon Road. And also, I own and run a real estate office in this town. I would like to speak to the fact that these farms are very detrimental to people's property values. They smell terrible, and the people who live in Nero suffer for it. And so, the weather is ill-framed and can be actually enforced tonight. Mr. Goddard, I would ask that we go ahead and vote on it, so that people, the boards and the Select Board can get the idea of how the town feels about these things. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, Amy Tarlo Lewis, I'm at Omega Way. So I'm, the same thing happened to me several years ago. It was the year we were all here until 1:00 in the morning, and I was the last article, and I was here at 1:00 in the morning, and then I was told it wasn't going to go to work, and so I left and went home to go to bed. But I'm wondering if it would be possible for the town, and if it would be, I don't think it would be overly onerous for the town to kind of put on this website like a how-to-do this, just sort of like a FAQ, because every year, we have citizens' petitions, and some people, you know, have some experience, are more savvy, and can work their way through the process, and there's other people who just don't have that background and understanding. And I think it would just level the playing field for people, and we could have more citizens' petitions in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Joey Anderey from Harvard Avenue. I'm pretty much here to echo what the previous speaker just said. There should be something that says citizens' petition on the front page of the town's website, that offers a little bit of guidance for people who want to do this. Some people would have no idea, me for instance, that this would have been like a zoning bylaw. People just need some guidance, and they don't know how to get it. Thank you.
Jenna Brownson, Harvard Road. What citizens' petitions are vying to do is to change our bylaws. When we want to do things that are relative to laws, we should be talking to lawyers. So that really is the first step in figuring this all out. It is not easy to navigate through changing laws, but there's a way to do it. And I would suggest, for people who do want to make changes at the citizens' level, that they speak to a lawyer who understands these things. So that's my suggestion. I think that the town shouldn't get involved with putting stuff on the website, because that could be seen as giving legal advice, which the town's website should not be doing.
Yes, sir?
I'm Jim Curran. My house is closer to Sanctuary Medicinals than it is to the moderator. I would like to offer my services to draft a bylaw, and any citizen who has signatures and interested people can call me. I'm in the book. I live at 236 Taylor Street, and I'll be here after this meeting. It's Jim Curran. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Briefly. Trifina Reedy, Beaver Brook Road. If this process is going to possibly take six to nine months, I urge everyone to do your research, find out how detrimental these grow farms are. We have one in town already, and it's caused terrible distress on Taylor Street in the Taylor Street neighborhood. Please pay attention, find out what's being presented at the Planning Board. There are other grow farms that are interested in setting up shop in Littleton. Please pay attention, and please work with us, so we can stop these from happening and limit the damage to what is already done in Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's no one in line. I think we can proceed to a vote, if that's what the petitioners would prefer. Alternatively, we can ask for a motion to postpone indefinitely, which would effectively end this discussion. It could come up at the annual town meeting, or whenever the next town meeting has occurred. So is it, is it the petitioners desire to proceed to a vote? No. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to postpone Article 15 indefinitely. Okay. All right, second? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second to the motion to postpone indefinitely, yes. All those in favor of a motion to postpone Article 15 indefinitely, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The motion passes to indefinitely postpone action on Article 15 for this town meeting, which doesn't automatically bring it to a new town meeting. It would give you, those who are interested, the opportunity to bring it to a future town meeting in the form of a proposed bylaw change, or you could ask a board to sponsor it for you, but it gives you some time to work on that. So thank you very much, and I regret the confusion on that. Now, we're going to move to the final article on the warrant, again, a citizens' petition article regarding a plastic bag ban. And it has been moved and seconded by citizens' petition to amend the general bylaws by installing a new, inserting a new chapter, 139, "Plastic Bag Ban As Ban As Follows." And you, what follows is what is written here in your white town meeting. Handout, the petitioners, in this case, are some students from Littleton High School. And the presentation here will be done by Rob Aurora, behalf of the, the group. And I must ask town meeting, because while they're all town residents, obviously, or I believe they are, that town meeting needs to give permission to non-voters to address town meetings. So I'm going to assume that there's unanimous consent to hear the petition in favor of the plastic bag ban. All right? So, hearing no objection, we'll, well, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor of hearing the presentation from these students, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So the permission is granted, therefore, to the students to make this presentation and respond to any questions that might be asked during the debate. I hope it extends to that. So, okay. Rob, if you'd like to introduce your, your group and start with your presentation, that would be great.
Hello, Town of Littleton, my name is Rob Aurora. I live in 3 High sop Lane. Before I begin, I would like to thank Mr. Moderator and the rest of you guys for giving us the presentation, or the ability to come up and present. Our group, LHS Environmental Club, has been working on this initiative for the past one and a half years, and we think it's finally time for Littleton to make the change. Currently, we are in a state of crisis with plastic waste. Every time we purchase something, we must think about the object's life cycle analysis. Life cycle analysis is an important tool. However, we just find out that plastic bags and plastic objects are simply not being recycled, and that microplastics are adulterating our soil, our bodies, and also our water sources in town. To clarify article's purpose, the end goal of this initiative is not to go from single-use paper, plastic bags to single-use paper bags. We understand the environmental impact of using any single-use product, and so going to paper bags wouldn't be a great idea. We hope to encourage residents in Littleton to use reusable bags, store boxes, or even forego bagging when possible. We also are not preventing the use of plastic bags for residential use. Littleton currently wouldn't be the only town in Massachusetts to be doing this. We would be following 154 other towns, 80 countries, and eight other states. Other states are also New England, Connecticut, Vermont, and Maine that surround us. Just to reiterate, paper, single-use plastic bags or to paper bags is not our end goal. We do concede, paper bags do require more fossil fuels to produce than plastic bags. However, paper bags are considerably better in these categories: biodegradability, toxicity, and landscape preservation. Research strongly confirms that paper bags are much more biodegradable than plastic bags. According to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, it takes around 1,000 years for a single-use plastic bag to degrade. However, in comparison, it can only take around one to two months for a paper bag to degrade. In town, I think many of you guys can attest to this, you are much more likely to find a single-use plastic bag on the ground than a single-use paper bag. As well, The Wall Street Journal estimates that us Americans use 100 billion plastic bags each year. However, you would be surprised to say only 5 billion of these plastic bags are recycled, which means 95 billion of these plastic bags are incinerated, or they're never used, and they're just left as landfill. The toxicity of microplastics. According to the U.S. National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, microplastics are fragments of plastic that are 5 millimeters or less in length. Over the past few years, there have been a much, a lot of emerging data information about microplastics and their toxicity. Just this year, microplastics were found in the body of a surgery patient. This can't be good for humans, especially if it's in the blood supply. Furthermore, a 2021 analysis from the American Cancer Society defined that there were 10,000 unique chemicals in plastics, and over 2,400 of them were of potential concern. The same study also found that 8,881 unique chemicals and additives were found in a single plastic product. So let's talk about how much microplastics we are exposed to. According to National Geographic, we are exposed to 70,000 particles of microplastic per year. Anyone in this room, depending on their lifestyle, could be consuming from .1 to 5 grams of microplastic each week. Just in comparison, a credit card is about 5 grams. We can limit the amount of plastic that we consume by just not using single-use plastic bags, and not surrounding ourselves with plastic daily, every single minute. Now, let's talk about the reusable polypropylene bags. Polypropylene is a type of plastic, a polymer that has grown popularity over the past few years because of its low impact on the environment. For a reusable polypropylene bag, you know, you only need to use it 11 times to match its environmental impact, which is much less than cloth bags and even compostable bags. The FDA has actually recently approved polypropylene as a food container material, and unlike some other types of plastics, there are no known cancer-causing effects associated with polypropylene. Okay, so Littleton may not be an aquatic community, right? We're in the center of Massachusetts. However, we still have many vernal pools, lakes, ponds, streams, and wells that are being contaminated by leaching plastic chemicals. Just speaking for myself, I'm an employee for like Parks and Rec over the summer, and I also do like lifeguard work. And over the weekend, sometimes we have to go lifeguarding, and sometimes when I go there, I'll just see plastic bags that are washed away by the shore. And I'm pretty sure if we go deeper into Long Lake, we could find many more plastic bags. And we can't continue to allow this to happen personally, in my eyes. This bag is also a small step in the right direction of becoming carbon neutral. Recently, in March of 2020, the Columbia Climate School released an article that further supports some of our facts that we stated before. So, plastic bags are rarely recyclable, and they take 20,000 to 1,000 years to break up into pieces. Also, while life cycle analysis doesn't really take into account litter, us humans, we understand that if we continue to live in this world, we must care about future generations, and we will continue to see litter, like, single-use plastic bags all around our places, our town, and our country, and the world. So just for people to know, Littleton wouldn't be one of the only towns to have a plastic bag ban. We would be joining 154 towns. Some local towns that currently have plastic bag restrictions are Pepperell, Townsend, Acton, Lincoln, Concord, and Westford. According to the Massachusetts Sierra Club, two-thirds of Massachusetts, which equates around 4 million residents, live in areas that currently have a plastic bag restriction. Here, we have a map of all, of all Massachusetts. Any town that is highlighted currently has a plastic bag restriction. As you notice, it's kind of moving westward right, or westward right now, and Littleton is highlighted in the red, and we should be next. Just eight days ago, NPR put out a revealing article about plastic bag and the recycling industry. It showed that there are a lot of false claims and lies that are being made by many industry officials. So according to the Ellen McMarther Foundation of New Plastic Economy, plastic, or a plastic, or an object needs to be recycled at a 30% rate to be considered recyclable. However, no plastic objects are being recycled at even close to that rate right now. Furthermore, many, like, you would think that the amount of objects that are being reused and turned into new objects are, is actually increasing. However, the amount of plastic turned into new things is actually falling into a new low of 5% following the pandemic. Also, waste management experts say that the problem with plastic is that it is expensive to collect and sort. There are now thousands of different types of plastic, and if you want to incinerate plastic, you must sort them, which takes a lot of labor and energy for waste management people. Are conservatives the plastic bag reuse? We always need to consider the life cycle of plastic bags, and in all or most life cycle studies, the plastic bags are being used twice. Once to carry your groceries from Market Basket to Donalyn's, and maybe the other time for waste baskets, or for pet litter as well. Some other alternatives to paper bags include compostable bags, reusable bags, and people will still get, like, plastic bags for produce or meat from local stores if they need it. In conclusion, I and the rest of our LHS Environmental Club believe that it's time for Littleton to finally make the change. We, there's a lot of other towns that have been following through, and we just need to think about Long Lake, Fay Park, Speck Pond, and all our natural beauties as well. We wouldn't come up here if we didn't have a lot of research backing it up, and we know, like, Mr. Del Piori will give a great presentation, and some of his facts will be true, but we have to think about our future generations as well. And we're just like, all of us are 18, 17, 16, but we really hope that And we're just, like, all of us are 18, 17, 16, but we really hope that you guys take this into consideration when you guys make a vote today. Thank you, guys, and have a great day.
All right, there is a presentation in opposition. While we're getting set up for that, I'll just direct you to this note on the orange update sheet that the Sustainability Committee voted unanimously to support Article 16 at their October 20th meeting. And also remind you that this proposed general bylaw would require majority vote to adopt. Zoning bylaws require 2/3 vote, general bylaws, a simple majority. All right, Jerry, are you ready with your?
Yes, sir, I am. Jerry Del Piore, I'm just a concerned citizen who's more interested in the science behind the ban. And what I'm going to look at is what's called the life cycle analysis, which is the environmental impact of making the product and using the product. And one of the interesting things you're going to see is that plastic, for all its litter issues, is actually more eco-friendly in terms of environmental impact than the paper that you'd replace it with. So if we go on. This is just what the article's about. Let's move on to the next one. What I looked at again is went to a number of primary sources, including the Columbia Environment School that these folks came up with, to try and find a comparison between paper versus plastic. And what everybody says is the environmental cost of extracting and converting the raw materials, be it wood, be it natural gas, into the final product far outweighs all the other impacts of is the product recyclable or where does it come from? Next slide. And these are some conclusions from one of the studies that are looking at paper versus plastic. They're saying 125 times as much water is needed to make paper to move a volume of groceries compared to plastic. About three times the electricity, 34% more fossil fuel, and a paper bag has about five times as much material as a plastic bag. So if you're strictly talking about diversion of waste, you've got to recover and recycle 80% of your plastic bags to get down to the same mass of material you'd have even if no plastic was recycled. And the key thing with plastic bags is they're reusable. I'm sure a lot of folks here reuse them two, three, four times. And if folks here are seeing them showing up at places like Long Lake, it's more unlikely it's because the bag was reused to carry something out there than somebody taking it from the grocery store and dumping it. And the final outcome, again, from the Columbia Climate School, they're stating in general that the reusable bags are so much bigger and heavier that it takes a lot of reuses to have the same impact as the single-use plastic bag. And this is some more details on a comparison between the different bags. They're saying the plastic bags use about 2/3 of fossil fuels, about 1/5 of municipal waste, about half the greenhouse emissions, and sulfur dioxide, which really comes from burning of coal, is also reduced because of less energy and other resources used to make the plastic. Next slide. Same thing came up with the UK study done back in 2011. And again, the only area where plastic is inferior is in waste disposal, and that's more a function of responsible use than saying we're going to ban the product. Next slide. Again, there was a Scottish and a Danish study that further support this. Next slide. And then you're always asking, well, how can it be? Why has plastic got such a bad rap? Well, it's made from fossil fuels, and it is incredibly durable. But when you look at other alternatives, in particular natural fibers like cotton, cotton is one of the most energy-intensive crops out there. It takes massive amounts of water and fertilizers and pesticides to produce the stuff. And one of the interesting things is reusable bags have to be periodically cleaned to cut down on germs and contamination, and that's one of the reasons why, when the pandemic came up, reusable bags were actually forbidden from use because of the potential for carrying germs and disease. Now, if you want to clean the bags, what does that take? Hot water, detergents, that's energy. Now, I just did a little bit of research, and based on a six-gram plastic bag and the energy content in the polyethylene it's made out of, you'd have to burn almost two of them just to heat one gallon of hot water. So the fact that the bags were usable, you start factoring in the cleaning, again, that's more environmental impact. And how much are we really talking about? I was going on the assumption of 10 bags a week for the average household, 6 grams a bag 52 weeks a year. It's about 7 kilograms, about 7 pounds worth of plastic a year. Put that in perspective, it's about the weight of a gallon of gasoline. So your entire year of plastic bags is equivalent to about a gallon of gas or a gallon of heating oil, which means you'd have more benefit in terms of your carbon footprint by driving 30 or 40 miles a year or turning your thermostat down for a few hours in an evening. The other thing, too, when we talk about recycling, that isn't environmentally free. It takes energy and resources to collect the material and reprocess it, and in the case of paper, there's a fair amount of energy, chemicals, and water that goes into the reprocessing. So really, paper isn't the eco-winner everybody's putting it out to be. So what do we do at the end of life? The type of plastic bags you get at the grocery store are made out of something called polyethylene. It's one of the more inert and safe plastics out of there. In fact, the water pipes to your house are probably made out of it. Your milk jugs are made out of it. It's been safe for food and potable water for decades. And what happens to Littleton's trash? Goes up to an incinerator where it's converted into energy for electricity. So in fact, a plastic bag properly discarded ends up as boiler fuel to power your house. If you landfill it, the stuff's pretty much inert. In fact, what you're really doing is locking up or sequestering the carbon in there. Kind of wasteful of resources, but the stuff's out of circulation, and it really doesn't leach. And this is a few years ago, the Great Pacific Garbage Patch was all the eco-concern, and I just wanted to briefly touch on that. There's a lot of talk about the plastic waste out there, and interestingly enough, by weight, the number-one contributor aren't plastic bags or bottles, it's fishing gear. The stuff's big and heavy, breaks loose, or is damaged and cut loose, and that stuff is nasty because it's designed to capture and kill and damage, and it'll persist for years. Next slide. Now, let's talk about microplastics. As the previous speaker pointed out, those are plastics that are relatively small particles. There's also something called nanoplastics, which are very small particles. Think dust. And the problem is that comes from just about any and all plastic use. Plastic bags are a really minor contributor to that. Think, for example, you've got a Styrofoam cooler or a kitty toy that's getting kind of chalky. That's nanoplastics. That's plastic dust. You're probably going to be breathing it. The tires wear down on your car. That's nanoparticles of rubber. Well, rubber's not really a plastic, but it's a polymer. You've got a cheap kitty toy that's getting kind of chalky. You've got paint weathering on your house. You've got the artificial turf out there for the ball field. As that wears and weathers, that's going to create microplastics. You buy those inexpensive, particularly the blue tarps, they start turning into shred. That's microplastics. You do your laundry. That's microplastics, the fibers. And in general, again, it's the same chemical composition, so it's mostly inert, particularly stuff like grocery bags. Next. Again, if you look at the contribution to Littleton's solid waste, it's a tiny fraction of the total contribution. So folks get enormous amount of energy on really a very tiny problem, and while I admire the interest and work of the Environmental Club, they'd be doing a lot more benefit by promoting responsible use rather than targeting a specific product. Again, it's more of a perceived problem. You go around town, do you really see the town littered with grocery bags? I don't. Maybe a few. Next. And the consequences of a ban really are you're going to inconvenience consumers. Paper tends to tear. You often have to double-bag, limited reuse. And eventually, if people get fed up with it, they're going to shop elsewhere. Next. There's plenty of alternatives. Encourage recycling. The local grocery stores have take-back programs. Make something like that mandatory. Encourage public education. Inform people how to responsibly handle this stuff. Next. And these are the conclusions. When you look at the life cycle impact, in other words, the cost of making the product and the impact on the environment of making it, a plastic bag ban is somewhat counterintuitive and counterproductive, and that's pretty much it. There's also one thing that the state is addressing the issue, and by the way, they were proposing a ban several years ago, and they never acted on it, which means either it was a bad idea or it was delayed. I'd also like to touch on one aspect of the regulations here.
Jerry, there's 10 minutes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Thank you to our presenters. Now, if anyone would like to speak with respect to Article 16, please come to the center microphone.
Yes.
Charlotte Russell, 73 Foster Street. I voted against this when it came up last time. I am certainly aware of the problem because I pick up plastic bags almost every time I walk around my block, but I liked the free Donalins bags that I use to line my trash and so forth. Learning more about how difficult it is to find places to recycle bags and that a lot of our recycling gets thrown away ultimately, and the problem of persistence of plastic in the environment, I came tonight fairly neutral. I changed my mind when I walked through the door, and a student met me and greeted me very politely and offered some information. In a couple of decades, I'll be gone. It'll be their world, and I think they deserve our respect and our support in trying to make it the world they want to live in.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Harvey Atkins, Newtown Road. In shopping at the local food store, I end up talking to a lot of different people, and I've talked to quite a few from Acton and Westford, and they are really opposed to the paper bag. When I go shopping in another area and they only have plastic bags, they last about three minutes. They really don't hold much at all. They deteriorate in your hands. They just fall apart. I think it's a waste to switch over. I know people that go to Littleton to shop because they do have plastic bags. I think it's going to add a great deal to our recyclables if you end up putting a lot of this brown paper into the recyclable bin. I really feel it's a bad way to go, but it's only my opinion, and I just feel that I was going to walk in here with a paper bag full of something, but I figured three police would jump me, and I was going to have it just rip apart and fall on the floor, which I've had happen in the grocery store. And I really think because you think that petroleum products are bad all around, I don't think it's a bad thing to have these bags. And I've used one of those plastic bags about 10 different times, and we've taken them to the hockey field, the hockey rink. We've taken them to the football field. We've carried all of our extra supplies, and we've found many, many uses. My daughter lives in a town that uses all paper bags, and what does she do? She comes to our house and gets a plastic bag full of plastic bags to take them back to her house because there's not over there. It's really, it's a mindset. It really is, and it's like, oil is bad, let's totally get rid of it, and paper is great. And another part of what Jerry, his presentation, which he didn't mention, was if you bury a paper bag, it's there almost 10 years later. So it doesn't deteriorate, like, you know, unless you're in the grocery store and there it deteriorates. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Joanne Deary from Harwood Avenue, and I'm here. I want to encourage everyone to vote for this bag ban. I think it's great. If you drive down Route 2, you can see the plastic streamers festooning all the trees. We just don't need it, and it's alarming that the microplastics are getting into our food chain. If you have a problem with paper bags breaking, get cloth bags. If you don't want to spend the money on cloth bags, just collect them from all the places that give them to you as like a free bonus. If you still don't have enough, I have plenty. Come, and I'll give you a couple from the back of my car. Paper bags also are awesome for mulch in your garden. You can use them shredded. You can put them in your compost pile. You don't even need to shred them. They're wonderful for killing grass if you're trying to expand your garden. So my one question for the presenters from the high school is that I hope that we'll get to learn all their names. Thank you.
My name is John Feltes. I had you in math in sixth grade, so I think all of us did, actually.
My name's Erin Coikendall.
My name's Maya Ruhl.
And I'm Arvarora.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, George Sanders, 672 Great Lord. First and foremost, I want to thank the club, the Environmental Club at the school for working on this project. I want to thank the person that's in opposition to this law, but at the same token, we as human beings, we do a lot of things, and a lot of it is a human problem and not the bag. We have a tendency to do things by the spare moment, forget to do this or that. The plastic bag has been kicked around for a long time. It's gotten a bad name. Paper bag is the same way. I served in the military, and I was in the environmental field for 30 years, so I have a healthy respect for the environment, and we all should have a healthy respect for the environment. But it's not just passing a law that is going to solve the plastic bag problem. Who's going to police? Who's going to manage this law? It costs money to do that. Did you figure in any cost as to getting rid of it and how much we're going to pay to manage it? Well, you got to take that in consideration. You just can't come up and say, okay, we're just going to get rid of it because ex-towns around us got rid of it. We shouldn't fall suit to get rid of what's done around us. We should fall suit to do what we need to do to keep Littleton like we want Littleton to be. And I drive up and down the streets. I don't just see, the biggest throwers of trash is the ones that are passing through, like on Route 119. I haven't seen a clutter of bags. Yeah, they have a tendency to throw soda cans and plastic cans out the window and so forth and so on. I police them up in front of my house all the time. But I said yes. No matter what we do here tonight, we're going to still have a problem with plastic bags. By saying that we're going to eliminate the use of them, we may do that to a certain extent, but you're not going to get rid of it. And if the state hasn't came up with a way to do it, I don't think we here tonight passing this law is going to get rid of it. So I encourage you to vote your conscience here tonight because I can tell you, it's not all over when we finish here tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
Sarah Randbacher, Hartwell Ave, and I'm the chair of the Sustainability Committee. The students presented their proposal to the September Sustainability Committee. We were extremely impressed with their research and their thoughtful consideration of the issues from all aspects. They recognized that the life cycle information is important, but also that the waste product is key because the science shows that the plastic Because the science shows that the plastic bags do not fully degrade, they enter the food web, we agree that a ban on the plastic checkout bags is an important step in reproducing, in reducing the pollution in our environment. After review of the final article at our October meeting, we were pleased to support this article, and we unanimously recommend a yes vote. Thank you.[1116.83][1116.83][applause] If I may speak just on a personal note, I'd like to know where these sturdy plastic bags are coming from, because there are a few that come into our house, but every single one of them has a hole in the bottom when I put the cat litter in it.
Thank you. Yes?
Erica Podgorny, Fox Lane. I'd also like to speak in support of this article. I think these kids did a great job. This is their world that we're borrowing for a while, and we need to listen to what they want their world to be. I also agree, those plastic bags, I don't know where you're getting them, but they rip faster than the paper ones do. They don't get reused, they don't get recycled. And if you don't like the, the paper ones, don't use paper, use reusable ones. I have a bunch in the back of my car that I have had for years. They last. I've used them over and over and over again, and I don't know about anyone else's family, but 10 plastic bags a week in my family isn't going to even begin to cut it. You go to the grocery store, they put like two items in each plastic bag because they can't hold anything. So I fully support this. I think we need to, as adults, need to start stepping up and supporting our young people in making this the world that they want to live in. Thank you.[1212.83][1212.83][applause]
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Rob Houston, Jennifer Street. I am a member of the Sustainability Committee. I voted in favor of this at our committee meeting, but I am here speaking as a citizen and a father. So I have a 25-year-old son and a 21-year-old daughter. My generation is leaving this world in a really bad place. So the only thing I'm really focusing on is, how do we take action at this town meeting to support our young people in taking steps? They had to ask our permission to present. That's crazy. They're our future. This is their future. If for no other reason, we should be supporting their work, their efforts on leading us and them into the future. We can argue all day long about whether bags break, whether paper's good, bad, whatever, cost, economics, it's a pain in the butt, it's going to cost us more money. At the end of the day, we need to support their efforts. I do not want them to get discouraged because we said no. Thank you.[1283.15][1283.15][applause]
All right. Thank you. Yes?
I'm Erin Koykendall. I'm 17, so can I speak?
Are you a voter?
Well, I'm part of the club. Like, I'm under 18.
No, I'm sorry, non-voters. I'm sorry?
I would like to speak and give half my time to her.
Just half? Okay, you may speak. I'll let you do that.
I'd just like to address some of the concerns we've heard so far. So one person asked, who would be enforcing this? That is written into our bylaw. So that's just the Board of Health, and the fines are all written in there as well. And another concern I've been hearing is how little of an impact this will have on our environment, but we need to start somewhere. This is going to be our world soon, this is my world soon. We need to start somewhere. So, thank you.[1341.15][1341.15][applause]
Okay, you've got a minute and a half, Don.
Sure, I'll go for it. Don McIver, 43 Foster Street. I'm also on the Sustainable Committee, and since I have three credentials, I've worked in environmental field for a long time, municipal, state, and federal, including Mass DEP. And let me tell you, I would not hold my breath for the state to solve this, mostly due to politics, and that's the agency that would solve it. So I have a great respect for Jerry and so on, but I do disagree with that. The real problem with plastic bags is the escape, is they're capturing them and how they degrade. They are a real problem, as anyone can attest to that does litter collection or anything of that nature. The conclusions given by this ecology club, Environment Club, are right on target. It's really a simple question. It's banning plastic bags. It's not telling you, isn't prescriptive, isn't telling you what bag to have or anything. And just two quick examples. I was in Dublin when they made a law to ban giving out any bags at the grocery stores. No griping, people just brought their own bags, and much like the stores here, you could buy a reusable bag, but you spend a dollar or two for a bag, you start learning to change your behaviors. Second solution, there's a group worldwide called Boomerang, which is where a group of people will collect reusable cloth, like t-shirts, and make cloth bags and give them away, and that's something that's done by a community at large. This is really simple. I think we should vote for it. I'd like to call the question.[1451.15][1451.15][applause]
Our tradition is that we don't let somebody call the question at the end of a speech. There's no closing the door behind you, but if someone else were to make such a motion, that's, that is, well, you have to be at the microphone to do that. We've got rules, so. Yes, sir. And while I'm at it, is this new information, Harvey? Because this is your second trip.
Yes, it is. I know it is. I couldn't fit it all in the first half. Harvey Atkins, Newtown Road. And I've been in town for years and years. I have three kids. We know all about, you know, they're the next generation, they're taking over, and that's, it's really great to have the young people do this. It really gives them like, you know, enthusiasm, and it's great, and people can stand up and say, everything's going to the next generation. But I know it is, so, because I'm part of the older generation. The other part is the, what I'm interested in is, if I go down to, say, Market Basket and I have a plastic bag with some empty beer cans in it that I'm taking into the package store to turn in, am I going to get arrested and fined because I have my plastic bag, which came from Market Basket, but I'm carrying it to the package store with empties? So I think the fine program just isn't fine. I think it needs a little more attention. I think if you pass this thing, it shouldn't have the fines on it until at least the next town meeting to see how it progresses. So I don't know what you think about it, but I think that's a fair request. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Harvey. Are you answering that question? Okay.
So written into the bylaw, it's not for like residential use, it's only for stores. So all that information is in the bylaw, if you just read through it.
Fine. Is it available now?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Josh Millard, 47 Goldsmith. I am a taxpayer. Also have 25 years in the environmental business. I have a degree, an undergrad degree in environmental studies. I have a master's degree in environmental studies. I spent two years in the Peace Corps teaching environmental education. I can attest that everything that Jerry said is 100% accurate, and that this ban is poorly-minded and not what we need for this town. I think that while the students are motivated from good intentions, they are young. So it is going to be their world. It is their world. I'm not dying tomorrow, it's still my world, too. I'm against this ban. I think it's wrongly-minded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Gretchen Webster, Bulkeley Road, calling the question.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay, we've had a motion to close debate. Is there a second to that? Second. Okay, all those in favor of closing debate signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, debate is closed on the main motion, which I will repeat for you before we move to the vote. Moved and seconded into the town, amend the general bylaws by inserting a new Chapter 139, plastic bag ban, as printed in the town meeting report for this town meeting. Okay, this requires a majority vote. I think we'll, first we'll attempt to voice vote. If the results of that are not clear, we'll go to a hand count, so. Stand by, Madam Clerk, we may need some tellers. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed?
No.
Okay, I don't think we'll need those counters. The motion passes by the necessary majority.[1712.03][1712.03][applause] And I declare a vote. Thank you very much. And before we have a motion to dissolve this town meeting, I'd just like to, once again, thank the town clerk and her team, our town administrator and our new assistant town administrator, the school department for their help in preparing for this town meeting. And as always, I'd like to give a shout out to the town's IT department, Nancy Glenn Cross, and to LCTV for doing the usual bang-up job that they do. I'll now entertain a motion to dissolve this town meeting.
No.
Okay, second. And second. Okay, all those in favor of dissolving the town meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, this town meeting is dissolved. Thank you.